Move on to the county meeting.
Smoke them if you got them.
Order this regular meeting of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission, and I'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minhawcounty.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Tuesday, May 28th at 5:00 PM. In the event of appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 18th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the rezoning during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the county commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the county commission are also held in the same room. Action taken on the text amendment during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the county commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th at or after 9:00 AM, and meetings of the county commission are also held in the same room. The first thing on the agenda is, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the April 22nd meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any planning commission member wish to have any item removed for discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to have item three removed, please.
Okay. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff of the audience. If a member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on that item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any other items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the planning commissions with the conditions recommended by staff. Okay, the first item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of April 22nd, 2019. Item number two is Continual Use Permit 19-17 to transfer one building eligibility on the west half, southwest quarter, except Rye and except Track 1, Kiergards Edition, and east one half, southwest quarter, north of Rye and Track 1, Jacobson Second Edition, from the northwest quarter, southwest quarter, to the southwest quarter, southwest quarter, all in Section 34, Township 101 North, range 47 West. The petitioner is Earl Grimace. He's also the property holder, and it is located approximately seven miles east of Sioux Falls.
Did you want to pull?
He's the petitioner.
Oh, okay, okay.
And there's no one else here that has an issue with that? Okay, we'll move on. Item number three has been pulled, and it will be moved to the regular agenda. So we'll move on to item number four. It is Continual Use Permit 19-22 to allow gravel extraction on the property legally described as the southwest quarter, Section 25, Township 102 North, range 51 West. The petitioner is Jim Supka. Property owner is David Tyler. The location is 26092, 465th Avenue. That is located approximately two miles east of Hartford. Okay, we'll move item number four to the regular agenda as well. So, the consent agenda, the items to be approved are item number one and number two.
Move approval of item one and two.
Okay, motion being seconded. Do you approve item number one and number two? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. So, item number two, you are free to leave if you so choose. It has been approved.
Good evening, Planning Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. Conditional Use Permit 19-21 is to transfer, should be two building eligibilities on the title slide there, on the property, as you can see, is outlined in red. So you can see the locations here. This is a property that is mostly located within the floodplain, the Hundred Year Floodplain, and this is a little bit of the property too. So these are both locations where the petitioner would like to transfer two building eligibilities, all of which they own this entire parcel here, which encompasses about 235.26 acres in total. The proposed location for the two building eligibilities would be located right at the corner here of County Highway 113 and 247th Street, as you can see, the location right here where the red dot is. There are, as you can kind of see on this map, to the direct northwest of this property, there is an existing concentrated animal feeding operation that's covered up by this inset of the white map right here. Besides that one, staff does not see any other operations in the vicinity. Mostly, there are some rural properties, or residential properties, in the area with houses, including this property right here, which is located just west of the proposed transfer location, and this property right here, which is the acreage for that 235 acres of the subject property. So staff goes, or with, the planning commission must review conditional use permit criteria, so let's briefly run through that. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for other uses permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. The property owner is required to put, or a right to farm notice covenant on the property before they can build a house. So just to notify potential buyers of the realities of locating agricultural area. The addition of two residential land uses, as you see in the area, there are already two there. Moving these from a undesirable location, or the Hundred Year Floodplain, to a location that's near a paved road, and there's less deterioration on the gravel road. The, two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. This will not increase the number of building eligibilities in this section. The surrounding area, as I mentioned, is primarily agriculture, and you can see the two current locations are in the floodplain of West Pipestone Creek. The, so three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The placement of the two building eligibilities will result in two single-family dwellings with a driveway approach that would be, to be determined by the appropriate governmental entity from Logan Township for those driveways. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Off-street parking will be required once there's a house there as part of the residential use of the lot. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. At any time, there's no nuisances that may arise from this property, but if there were, like, public nuisances, that would be addressed by staff in a manner that's appropriate to that situation on a complaint basis. Six, health, safety, general welfare of the public, and the comprehensive plan. The health, safety, and general welfare of the public should not be significantly impacted by the transfer of the two building eligibilities. The intent of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan will be upheld and met under the requirements of density zoning. The staff finds that the conditional use permit request is consistent with density zoning and recommends approval of conditional use permit 19-21. The following conditions. One, a right to farm notice covenant shall be placed on each deed prior to the issuance of building permits for the single-family dwellings. And two, that a driveway or culvert permit be obtained from Logan Township prior to the issuance of the building permits for each single-family dwelling. And I have a few pictures of the site that show the existing locations of the building eligibilities. This is that West Pipestone Creek, the locations of one of the building eligibilities, and the other one would be further north down the creek. And this is the proposed location of where the building eligibilities would go on the property. This is that existing house that I mentioned. And then this is just looking at the site of the proposed location for the building eligibilities. And then here's 247th Street, going off towards the highway, and then here's the county highway. And that is all the pictures that I have. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Any questions for David? Not at this time, but I might ask you to go back up. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward?
Yeah, I'm Kevin R. Crisp. I sat where you guys are sitting for 15 years. This is pretty clean. Staff did a great job. I also agree with the right to farm notice and for the township determining the driveways, the two recommendations. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Bruce Burkhart. I live at 24607 481 Avenue, which is where he said that thing was on the map, and I do have a CAFO operation there. And so my goal here tonight is twofold. One is to not be part of a problem. Like Ole and Lena, when Ole was standing there looking at the flagpole, and Lena goes, "What are you doing?" And Ole says, "Well, I need to know the height of the flagpole." So she took a wrench out of her purse, took two bolts out, put the flagpole down, and he goes, "Well, how long is it?" She took a tape measure, measured it, and she said 21 feet 6 inches, and Ole said, "Isn't that just like a woman to give you the length when you ask for the height?" Okay? So, he didn't, he complained needlessly, and I don't want to do that, okay? What I want to do here tonight is to be part of an awareness of the agriculture that's in this area. Our family farm is a multi-generational family farm. To the north of this, we have a cattle operation, and like I said, to the west and north, we have a hog operation. Two miles to the east, there's a multi-generational family farm that has an operation. Couple miles to the south, there's one, and there's one to the southwest. And so there is an intensive agriculture presence in this area. And so alls I am saying is, is please be aware that at some point in time, there possibly would be a conflict between agriculture and non-farming rural residents, okay? From my perspective, when we do these kind of things, the potential for conflict goes up, and I'm just saying, please be aware of that. That's what I'm here to tell you tonight, and I appreciate your effort. Obviously, the two projects that our family has done came through this very same board, and I appreciate that. And so, did you have any questions for me? That's what I came here to say tonight.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else in the audience? Becky, you wanted this pulled. Do you have any comment on it?
No, I wanted it pulled because I had a phone call regarding it, and... Should I go ahead and make my comments even though we don't have a motion on the floor?
Sure.
I think, I think we always have to be aware of it, just like Mr. Burkhart has indicated, that when we move housing eligibilities to a corner, we increase the potential for density, but in the long run, it also fits our county plan, that you have, you have the houses in clusters in one area where you're least likely to disrupt agriculture than houses all scattered throughout the section. So, as a board member, I wanted to make sure that we had this pulled for, due to citizen input, but I think it raises just a valid question for us to always be keeping in mind. I know, very familiar with the property, where it's at, and I think to move those out of the floodplain and to the corner is good, and it will have them in a cluster instead of all spread out throughout that section. But we do have to be aware that we do sometimes increase that potential for conflict as younger generations of farmers try and come back and re-enter the farm, and oftentimes, that is in the form of livestock production, because we have a finite amount of ground. So young farmers and producers look to animal livestock. So, you didn't want that part that much, did you?
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment also, if I could. You know, Minnehaw County, people don't really know it, but we're either the fifth or sixth most agricultural county in the state as far as with revenue. We have dairy, we've got crops, we've got, you know, other animal operations, and it's a huge, a huge part of our economy, if not the biggest. And there, you guys are right. There is sometimes conflict between the new residential people and the people that want to invest in animal operations. And we are going to continue to grow and change in this county. In 1870, Chicago was 100,000 people. In 1970, it was 3.5 million. I don't know what's going to happen in this county, but we're not going to just be 190,000 at the end of this century. And, but on the other hand, I think that we're going to be refining our agricultural procedures, and there'll be new ways and new methods that will make what some people consider to be difficult operations to live near, they'll become easier to live near. And anyway, I sure want to, I appreciate your comment, Kevin, about the right to operate, but I also know that it doesn't matter what it is. People will come in, and, you know, we had, I don't know, one day we approved three CAFOs and a cell tower, and the cell tower was appealed. I mean, what can I say? It was going to cause dairy cows to give less milk, and people have their reasons, and they may not be scientific or anything, but I could go on and on. But I'll make a motion to approve Conditional Use Permit 19-21.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number three, Continual Use Permit 19-21. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Move on to item number four. Looks like David.
Good evening, Planning Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. Conditional Use Permit 19-22 is to allow gravel extraction. This property is located, the next slide, you can see here, the property is outlined in red, of which about half of the property to the northwest mainly in that area along this creek that runs through here towards, it kind of runs off in the distance towards Skunk Creek, to the west, or to the east of the property. And it's located right along Interstate I-90, and then here is South Dakota State Highway 38 that runs right here, and then the gravel road, as you see, is 250, 261st. 261st Street. The total acreage is about 55 acres that is outlined in the petitioner's application for gravel extraction. The, so county staff, planning staff, sent this request to the city of Hartford, and they had their Hartford Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board review the item. They agreed with the staff recommendations that were listed in your staff report, except that they would like the county to consider that all trucks be tarped, covered and tarped when loaded and leaving the pit area. But then I received a phone call from the applicant saying that that was, it's not something that typically has been done in the past with other gravel extraction conditional use permits, but it's something that staff wanted to bring forward because it is a recommendation from the Hartford Planning Commission, and we do, we have a, an agreement with them to uphold their concerns, because it is so close to the city and it's within Hartford Township. The following, the development and operational criteria for rock, sand, and gravel extraction, just going through some of the things. There is one of the properties that is located within the required 1,000-foot setback for gravel extraction, as you can see, is located right where my cursor is in red. It's a farm property there. It's located immediately west of the property. The applicant has provided in your packets the waiver for that property, which is required by the zoning ordinance. And this is the only property that is within that 1,000-foot setback, as the other houses in the area are just beyond 1,000 foot to the east. This is one of the property owner, which is the Tylers. And then to the north, that one's over 1,000 feet, and then there's some additional ones to the west, but those are about the same distance as the other three houses there. The application narrative states that the proposed hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The applicant does plan to construct a minimum six-foot-tall berm that's parallel to Interstate 90, as you can see here. And if I go to the next slide, this will show the site plan. This one's kind of hard to see, but you can see the area is hashed out. This is the area to be mined, part of that 55 acres, and then extends a little bit on this side of the creek too, so it goes on both sides. Skip forward. This one will show the proposed mining area with the buffers, which are what the applicant plans to do for raising the level of the berm to obstruct the view from the interstate road as well, and as well as to the west of the proposed mining area for the residents, the one residence within the 1,000-foot setback. And the remaining areas, there is no berm that is being planned because there's still quite a bit of distance from the mining area and the residence to the south and east. The applicant does not plan any blasting on the site for this application, that if there's any noise from the operation should not exceed an average of 55 decibels recorded over a 10-minute period, and that's measured from the nearest existing residences. Air quality, if there's any monitoring should be conducted at the operator's expense when conditions warrant. And there is an additional one on there that the applicant does provide, does plan to provide dust control on the 261st Street, which is a gravel road, for about 3/4 of a mile from the location. The proposed driveway would be located, I should go back to the, as you can see, like, right here would be, or actually, right here, would be the driveway, so it'd be about 3/4 of a mile down. This is a half-mile, and then over here would be the paved road, which runs to South Dakota State Highway 38. So that is a total of about one mile. The applicant has completed test borings on the property to show that water is not present within the gravel veins, as this is located near a creek. The depth of the aggregate on the property ranges between 10 feet and 15 feet in depth. The applicant is working with Hartford Township on identifying the appropriate haul routes for this proposed operation. As I've mentioned, the proposed haul route would be located on that exact route that follows that path. The assurity bond should be filed with the county auditor to protect the county in event that the operator were to abandon the site without completing the conditions of a conditional use permit. And just going through the reclamation plan that the applicant has provided, once the operation is finished, the property will return to an agricultural state that it is now, with the top soil being replaced as well. The additional considerations that the applicant has provided, the maximum height of a bench in the quarry should be 30 feet, and in addition to that, the property should be secured with a fence all the way around, and secure during non-working hours to prevent any issues from that. So, this was the buffer plan that I just showed. This kind of shows the elevation of what that proposed berm would be, as you see Interstate I-90 here, and you can see the elevation of the berm at the proposed gravel extraction right here. And then this just shows the truck route in greater detail. As you can see, it follows this path to that paved road, and then goes to South Dakota State Highway 38. And I took some pictures when I was out on the site, just going through some of those. The, this is the driveway entrance to both sides of the proposed gravel extraction, which would end up crossing the creek area. And then this shows one of the residences, which is, belongs to the property owner, and that's located just to the southwest of the site, as you can see right here. Then, this is a picture of the residence that's closest to the proposed, the subject property, as you can see right there, looking north, with the trees off in the distance. That's where the road terminates, and then Interstate I-90 in the background. And this is looking back on that road, back towards the property owner's house on the property, towards the south. And then this is back out on 261st Street, as you can see, the intersection of that, and then going, it goes up quite a ways on the hill there, out of that creek bottom. And then this is looking back west towards, towards where we were just standing there. This is the house that was located to the southeast of the proposed, the gravel extraction. As you can see, it's kind of a newer house. And then, again, looking back west on 261st Street to show the conditions of that gravel road. And then this, there are some, some other businesses that have located, as you can see, there's a concrete's precast plant that's located right here to the north of 261st Street. This is an entrance to one of the other gravel extraction sites, which is located along Skunk Creek. As you can see, the truck off in the distance with the gravel there. And then this is the paved road that leads from 261st Street to South Dakota State Highway 38, which was, in prior conditional use permits, was required to be paved. And again, with the concrete precast plant there, in the distance there. And I took a picture of 4, 477th, 466th Avenue. There's a sign that says, "No trucks." This leads directly to South Dakota State Highway 42. This was also another requirement, other conditional use permits for gravel extraction. As you can see, that goes uphill, and just wanted to take a picture for reference for everyone. And so, just really quickly, going through some of the conditional use permit criteria, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Given what you've seen with the relatively sparse population of this area with residential, minimal residences, there should be neutral impact upon the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. Most of the property in the surrounding area is in agricultural production, or a mile away to the east, there are a few commercial businesses that have, begin to develop in the area that's located adjacent to the state highway. The proposed use should not impact the property values of agricultural land in the general vicinity, or immediate area. With proper planning and execution of the plan, the proposed gravel extraction should not affect the enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. There's been limited development with the Um, there, there's been limited development with the exception of the businesses that are located next to the state highway. Um, which include manufacturing and warehousing, um, within the last five years. In addition, the city of Hartford continues to grow along the north side of Interstate I ninety. So having additional conditions placed on it for having screening there for the operation. Should benefit the area for future development that would be occurring to the north of Interstate ninety. Um, the proposed use should not affect the normal and orderly growth of surrounding vacant land, which is primarily agriculture. Um, once the mining operations are complete, the applicant plans to return the site to agricultural production. Three, the utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities are provided. Um, the applicant has, has indicated that the haul roads are four sixty-fifth Avenue. To two sixty-first street east, one mile to four sixty-sixth Avenue, then to South Dakota State Highway thirty-eight. And all the other utilities have been provided for the operation. Four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met, the applicant meets all the off-street parking and loading requirements. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration and lighting inclusive of lighted signs. So that none of these constitute a nuisance. Um. Any increase in the amount and frequency of vehicular traffic will produce dust from travel on gravel surfaces. The, the applicant has mentioned steps to mitigate these in their plan. Um, with berms and shelter belts and providing dust control on the, the gravel roads. The applicant should take um, any other issue, any other precautions to prevent any sound disturbances or air quality issues during the operation of the proposed gravel pit. As is required by the zoning ordinance. Um, and six, health, safety and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. Goal five of the environmental stewardship chapter of the envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan states. Recognize that sand and gravel deposits within the county are an un-renewable natural resource and beneficial to the, the economy of the county and welfare of its people. The envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan then has an action statement that suggests that conflicts with existing neighborhoods should be minimized. Um, so staff finds that the proposed use for gravel extraction is compatible with surrounding land uses. As well as goals and policies of the envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit nineteen dash twenty-two with, there's a total of twenty-two conditions. Um, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have just a quick question. I noticed that item nineteen is that the trucks will be covered and tarped when loaded and leaving the pit area. Does that fulfill the Hartford uh, uh, request as far as tarping?
Yes, that was the concern that was brought forward to us.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess man, sure. Uh, David, did, did they, did you get an agreement with Hartford Township for haul roads then? Cause one part says, this makes it seem like they did and the other part in this, in our packet seemed like they had to talk to them yet. Is there agreement there or not?
So the applicant, I believe is here and they can clarify on that, but I have talked to the applicant in recent conversations, especially about. Condition number nineteen, but they are working on getting an agreement with Hartford Township, if not already.
Okay.
Thanks David, is a petitioner here, will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Jim Sukup, eighty-nine hundred West Lakeside Drive, Sioux Falls. So, um, yes, I am the applicant and. Um, couple things, so we have, there's twenty-two um. Recommendations are restrictions on here, I'm fine with all of them but one, the. Number nineteen that the trucks will be tarped and loaded when leaving the pit area is the one that I have the heartburn with is, is mainly a deal breaker for me. Um, the other thing is I don't have a formal agreement with Hartford Township. I have been in communication, I sent them a letter on May ninth. Excuse me, un- unfortunately it was right after their, they had a, their meeting, they don't meet again till after this meeting. So I sent them a letter, uh, went to Terry Kruger, he passed that along from my understanding to uh, the members of the township. Um, it is a letter explaining what I am willing to do. I had one response and that, um, the person might be in the audience, I'm not sure. It was about dust control and I know dust control has been addressed on here, that we will apply it twice a year over that mile section. So I, any questions for me?
I, I have an answer. Yeah, it's number nineteen, that seems to be a big one.
Right.
Um. Couldn't you uh, just wet the material down before it goes down the road?
Uh, no, cause it'll drip out of the back of the trucks and you, no.
You'd have to put that much water on just to keep the dust.
No, we don't have a dust issue with the material coming off the trucks. It's, when you're talking about the dust issue, it's mainly going down the gravel roads, that's where the dust control is applied. So by putting water on, I, I, that won't help, the, the tarp situation is for rocks flying off the, off the loads. By putting water on the rocks, I don't think it's gonna help it from flying off the truck.
I thought it'd probably be some gravel that you just have to put some dust on it and it'd be solve the problem. Or water on the dust.
No, I understand, but yeah, that isn't probably a feasible op- option.
Any other questions for the petitioner, Jeff?
Jim, I appreciate your being here, um, going west I think is pretty impossible currently on two sixty-first street. I, I don't think that, uh, I think you'd need a mule and uh.
I have no intention of going west, all my work is going east to Sioux Falls and surrounding area. If you wanna put a restriction that absolutely no trucks go west, I'm one hundred percent fine with that. And that's fine, yeah, I have no problem, you put it on there, I'm good, I'll put up a sign, no trucks that way.
I've seen pictures of two sixty-first, uh, south of the Brower subdivision and uh. Some plowed fields look better.
I agree, I mean, obviously, you know, we've gotta be stewards of the property too, we wanna take the closest route, this is. The best closest route that we pick going to the east and then straight north, uh, it has the least impact. Um, really no reason, even if we are going to the town of Hartford, we're still gonna go east. Get on Highway thirty-eight and then come back into town, that's our, that's the route we would go if we were delivering to Hartford. I don't, other than maybe a homeowner to the west of us asking for a load of gravel, you know, to buy a load of gravel from us. That would be the only reason, but then again, somebody's gotta go down that road to deliver to a homeowner. That would be the only reason I could see why we'd need to go that way.
Okay, thank you, we may have to call you back up, we'll see what happens here.
Thanks.
Anyone in the audience care to speak to this item? Will you please step forward, uh, with your name and address?
Uh, Nicole Anderson, uh, four six three four six, two hundred and sixty-first street. Um, like Jeff mentioned, our, our road is in some serious dire straits. Um, we obviously have been battling as a, we were, I talked to Craig Dewey and we kinda had to look at the map to. Completely determine whether we were dual jurisdiction, we're just right on the, right on the border. So I talked to the county highway department along with, we went to the township board. Our, we have not only um, culvert issues, drainage issues. We have businesses operating, running um, twenty-four, seven, carrying like. Probably eighty thousand pounds of, or maybe, yeah, I don't know, I'm not good at weights, but. Uh, trucks pulling trailers down our roads, which obviously we all want Hartford to expand. None of the, I don't believe any of the neighbors are opposed to this. Our big concern is, is what he just discussed was heading west. Um, there is a culvert right at the corner. Um, not too far off from where this is proposed, that it's not a bridge, it's technically a culvert, which there's no weight restriction sign right now, but there should be. Um, our guess, uh, concern of ours as neighbors and people living on the road is how, how long is this? Um, this gonna take, this, this rock removal and extraction? Um, is this gonna be one year, two year, five year, ten year? Um, like we, we all wanna see Hartford expand, I don't think anybody's opposed to businesses. We all enjoy the country and realize there's gonna be dust flying and stuff, but as a township road. Who's gonna pay for these repairs when these big trucks are hauling rock, gravel, dirt? Um, if I didn't have an all-wheel drive car, I liter- literally would not be getting down my road right now. So, yeah, this has been an extreme year, we all know that, lots of water, lots of extra damage to the roads, but. We still have lots of rain, lots of summer, lots of, I mean, that's my biggest concern and I think the neighborhoods is like. How long is this process, is it gonna go through the winter months, is it? I mean, who's gonna pay for these roads to be repaired if we're a township? Cause it's not in our budget to be paying for a rock quarry, even if it's only a quarter of a mile. And granted, the people that's affected by it are the landowners and hopefully they stay to the east and keep heading out. But for the families that have to travel up and down that road, in and out of Hartford. Not to mention, we're looking at getting our bridge overpass rebuilt within the next five years or less. When our bridge got hit, not once, but twice, and they had to shut it down. Guess who became the next interstate, two sixty-first, that's the road we live on. It went from Highway thirty-eight down ours and who's to say? Who else is gonna be hauling if it's not Sukup? We got First Rate, we got all these other rock quarries, we got farmers, it's not just Sukup. You know, so you guys really need to consider, and I don't think it's that we don't want this, it's just. What will you as county commissioners do to help a resident like me? All the farming families, everybody that lives there. Wh- what, what can we do to make this work and fix our roads? So we can operate as businesses and families. So I guess that's pretty much right now. This packet is what I've been working with, with the township of Hartford. I'm possibly getting weight restrictions, possible speed limits. Because we have people flying up and down the, that road seventy miles an hour, there's blind spots. You have these big trucks coming down these inner, you know, people coming in different avenues, somebody could get hurt or killed. Um, and we're just kinda working as a community trying to figure out. You know, with some of these businesses that were grandfathered in, how as families and farming community, we can all work together to make this work. So, like I said, I just really hope that you guys can consider this and. I don't know if it's an opportunity that it can become a county road. Um, because right now, without it being a county road, we have no way to get. Any weight restrictions, speed limit or any help from the county sheriff with any issues we have. So, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Greg Boggs with Hartford Township as a board member. Jim gave Terry, emailed Terry a letter, May ninth. Our meeting was previous to that and I am very saddened to say that I'm disappointed in Mr. Sukup. For delivering us that message after our meeting, when he knew this meeting was coming up. He dug those tet pits earlier and he knew this was coming around, so why are we snowballed? And then you seen the road conditions out there and he's gonna make it the interstate. He guaranteed me the other night pretty much so, he says we'll build that road up where it's haulable. You know, is what his word was, but I need it in writing to take it back to the people. Because they are, you just heard from Nicole, that they are the ones that are going to suffer the consequences. They'll have one way out and the one way out will be west. And then you talked about the hard surface road going out to Highway thirty-eight. Why did that high, why was that road had to be paved when this one does not have to be? Every other gravel pit has to have a hard top surface. Or any commercial property, I understood that they had to have a hard top surface to have a business in it. And if this isn't a business, I don't know what it is. Cause they are gonna reap profit from it, so that's a business. It's a commercial business with big trucks. And a dust control twice a year is unacceptable. My granddaughter drives that road and whenever one truck goes by, there's another one right behind them, if there's any dust and they'll, they'll pit it up. It's guaranteed to pit it up, Jim says, well, we'll blade it and we'll keep dust control on it. But twice a year is what I heard tonight, twice a year ain't gonna cut it. They won't maintain it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Greg, if I could.
Could you stay?
So, having a, a, a blacktop road would uh, uh, leave many of your concerns there?
Yes, they would. Because you ain't gonna pit it up, you ain't gonna, or get it worseboard and you won't have the dust on it. Unless that road goes to south.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
And I'd like that in writing from Jim too. Because the one going south with that little white, white sign that says no truck hauling, that doesn't cut it for the truckers. Cause they'll haul south, I'll guarantee you they'll haul south. Because you know, they pay the big ticket for those plates on those trucks and they have the right to haul. Law enforcement can't stop them, we've done that.
Anyone else care to speak? Uh, Mr. Sukup, would you please come back to the?
There's one more back there.
Oh, you wanna come forward, tell, say your name and address then?
My name is Mike Schultz, I live at four six four seven zero two sixty-first street, which is the property, first property just to the west. Uh, I grew up with this all my life, have any of you been down Sand Street? Go look at that road and tell me the dust situation isn't terrible. You get promised a lot of things by these people, nothing happens. The quality of life, I mean, you move out to the country to be peaceful, to relax. The dust just flies and granted, like we said, we understand we live in the county, or in the country, you're gonna get some dust, right? But Nicole's not kidding when that road is an interstate. There is so many vehicles going up and down that road, trucks, vehicles, everything. The dust is unbelievable. And like I said, I've dealt with this all my life, you think you move away from this. But it, it, it is just, it's terrible. I really consider you to think about that. Of even going out to a road like that and seeing what that dust does. Jeff's been out there, he knows what I'm talking about a hundred percent. It's just, it's not good quality of life and there's no, there's no tests that they're gonna do, don't let them buffalo you. There's no air test, people are not gonna come out and test the air and say, nope, they're gonna shut them down, it's not gonna happen. Cause we've been through that many times, I've talked with Jeff many times. That's all I have, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You wanna come forward, state your name and address?
My name is Nathan Garing, I live at four six four six, two hundred and sixty-first street, I'm the middle house right there, right next to Mike who just spoke. Um, yeah, my concerns are about the same as everyone else's, um, one is the safety of my kids, I have three young girls, two that are just be learning to drive right now. Um, with different soccer practices, basketball practices, it's not uncommon for my oldest daughter who is sixteen to drive up and down that road four to five times a day. Um, I can't imagine what it would be like with constant trucks going in and out of there with the dust. You know, half of the, I mean, there's several parts on that road right now. Where it's one lane traffic, where you're going around giant holes and mud, but it's impassable. And some at the bottom of a hill, some right at the top of a hill, I mean, it's dangerous. So you can about imagine a carload of my kids on the wrong side of the road trying to get to where they need to go. With semis coming in and out of there non-stop. Um, and again, I would, I don't believe that there'll be no semi traffics going west as well. They're gonna go whatever route they have to take to get to where they need to go. Um. And if this does happen to go through, what kinda recourse do we have when we do have problems? You know, is the sound gonna be too loud for us, we're right there. Um, dust, is it gonna be in our yards constantly? Uh, you know, and who's gonna pay for it, who's gonna take care of it, will it cease if it becomes too excessive? Will it cease if it becomes too excessive? That's close. And it scares me to have my kids drive on that road. We're petrified. I mean, them trucks coming, it's a cloud of dust. And you can't see. So if there's several of them, it's, I'm petrified. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Penny Wagner. I live at four six four six two two hundred and sixty-first Street. I'm the third house. I live right next to Nathan. A couple of the questions I have that I would like to understand are, what are the weight of these trucks going to be? And what weight restrictions will be on the road to make sure that anything that they do try to do for dust control or maintenance is going to withstand the weight of those trucks? I'd also like to see a speed put on there, whether it be like thirty miles an hour, forty miles an hour. I don't want these trucks going super fast up and down that road. So I think all those trucks need to abide by a certain speed limit. And we need to make sure that they always go east. Just so you guys understand, the West Central School District will not send a bus down that road right now. It's been that way for probably a month and a half to two months. So that's the kind of conditions that we're living under on that road. And then we also need to understand how long this conditional use permit will be good for. Is it a year? Is it two years? I'd like to see an expiration date put on that, please. Any questions?
The expiration date is twenty thirty.
Okay. Wonderful.
It has to be reclaimed by twenty thirty.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would the petitioner please come forward again? Can you address any of those items that came up, some of those questions?
Sure. First of all, I think the condition of two sixty-first from four sixty-fifth going east is far different than two sixty-first going west. I think that's where the significant amount of bad road is. I don't know what more to say other than, "Put the restriction on me. My trucks don't need to go west. There's no reason to go west." I don't know what else. What else would you like me to say or do? Other than, "There's no reason for us to go west. We go east out of there. That's the route we want to take." Unless there's a lost truck, there's no reason to go west. So that's the one way I'd put that. Is it Greg?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I guess I don't appreciate saying that I'm snowballing you or things like that. I, that was never the intention. The letter was written May ninth. I called Terry. I actually talked to Terry before that. He said we had just missed his meeting. The test borings were done earlier. We are waiting on the samples to make sure that it can make the appropriate road gravel that we needed. So that's why there was a delay in there, okay? I hope you can appreciate that.
Sir, you're out of order.
We did not talk to Hartford City. That was the county that talked to the city of Hartford. I wrote the letter, had Terry sent it. That was the best I could do at the time. He circulated it. I did get the call. We talked about it. Basically, I'm saying that I will keep the road in an acceptable condition by dust control, gravel, blading, and maintaining. What else? I'm not sure what else you can ask of me. I feel we can put the road in as good a condition. We probably can put the road in better condition. But we will put the road in as good a condition as it is. And again, that's my word that you would, you know, and you can monitor it and things like that. I don't know what more, how else I can respond to that. That was put in the letter to Hartford Township. The dust control was also put on by the county. That was their requirement of two times a year. So there was one comment about asphalt. That is a deal breaker. There's not enough aggregate in this operation to justify putting an asphalt road all the way down there. It just isn't. I can go through many gravel, excuse me, gravel operations that do not come out onto a asphalt road. I don't think that's a requirement. I don't think that's ever been a requirement other than maybe one here or there. So... I'm not sure that I answered all the questions you had for me.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for him?
Just back to number nineteen.
That was put on by the city of Hartford, and I don't quite understand that. I'm not sure the city of Hartford tarps their trucks. I don't think the state of South Dakota tarps their trucks. I'm not sure if many county tarps their trucks. It's not a state law. I'm not sure why the city of Hartford... Honestly, I have no idea. I'm not saying... They might have a valid reason, but when I called and asked, I couldn't get a valid reason. So that's why I had to take it off the consent agenda. Is because I couldn't have that conversation with them because they didn't know exactly sure why it was put on there.
Any other questions for him?
Yeah, Jim, I just have one. Is there a speed limit on that road already?
That I don't know. You know, if you want to go thirty, thirty-five miles an hour for a speed limit, I'm totally fine with that. I would ask though. There might be a speed... I don't know, but I would like, if there is a speed limit put on, I would like it to be for all vehicles so that when we're going that speed, we aren't getting passed by cars. And that makes it really dangerous. So then everybody will go that speed limit.
Madam Chairman, we can't, as the planning commission can't set the... You know that.
Yeah. It's a township issue that they have to set whatever the speed limit is on those roads. Same thing with weight limits, same scenario. So that's not really up to us to make those decisions, but that's a decision that you would have to make with them.
Okay.
Totally agree. Any other questions for him? Thank you. Do you have another comment back there?
Yeah, what was the timeframe?
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to come forward again, Mr. Sukup? They were asking about the timeframe for this operation?
It depends on the economy, of course, on the amount of aggregate that we're able to move. I think the permit goes to twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty.
I don't see it going that long, I'll be honest with you. Maybe five, maybe ten years. You know, it all depends on the economy and the need and the demand for the aggregate. We have more years like this, I can guarantee you, the townships are going to need more gravel. The counties are going to need more gravel. And that is one thing I hope that we can understand is, as we restrict our gravel and mining operations, the more we restrict them, the higher the cost of the aggregate goes, the less we can afford to put on the roads. Because we all have limited resources. But I think it goes to twenty thirty.
Any other questions for him?
There's a hand in the back, Madam Chair.
Sir, you'd have to come forward again and address, or come to podium again.
I guess my big question is, it's the county that decides whether he can have this business as an operation, but it's a township road. So I mean, there's really, you guys have to figure this out. Because, I mean, he can say he's going to fix the road, but you guys can approve it, but the roads pass.
That's why I asked about the hall agreement, because that's between the township and him. That's between you, that's between the township and Mr. Sukup.
Which our township didn't hear about this until I showed up at our township meeting.
You still, you still go through a hall agreement. We have one with Dairy up there where we have a signed agreement with them on a hall agreement. That's what you guys need to sit down and do with Mr. Sukup there. Sit down and have a hall agreement and decide on what you guys want to do, who's going to pay for what and all that. That's why I asked about it earlier, so...
Okay. And that was just my big...
That's what you guys need to do. I mean, that's, we can approve it, but you guys got to sit down and decide how you're going to do with your road, so...
That's not an issue that we take up here. That's not part of what we do.
That's up to you guys as a township.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wants to come forward again?
That actually is not true. Condition number five, that all the requirements in the hall road agreement between Hartford Township be followed continually. So there has to be a hall road agreement between me and the Hartford Township. So that's part of your stipulations on me. Now, whether I'm able to get a hall road agreement with Hartford Township or not remains to be seen. So, but that is one of your stipulations that you have in here. Okay?
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak? I'm going to close the floor. Any comments, commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Jeff?
I tell you what, there's always been a sore spot for me in that Brower subdivision, which is just south of Hartford. And that thing, the water comes off the interstate, goes into the Brower subdivision where there are no culverts, no curbs, any of this stuff, flows right down the hill and washes out two sixty-first Street. And now that's an additional problem for this project here. It all emanates from that little area not having been done correctly. And I know they're assessing their residents. I talked to one gal that has antique store. And she's going to be paying twenty-six thousand dollars towards the road district. But it really bugs me that that area continues to poison development for miles. I am not opposed to gravel pits, but I think I'm not ready to approve this one today. I think I'd like to check with our highway department and get further input from the township out that way. I do think the road is a big issue right now. That's that I'm not as worried about tarping. And I think watering it down makes one heavy truck. But anyway, that's my view.
Is that a motion to defer?
No, I'm just, I'll wait to hear my brothers and sisters.
Any other comments for commissioners?
I agree with Jeff. I think they need to sit down and get a hall agreement and decide if they want to do speed limits and decide all that. I'd rather see that in writing first and approve that.
But taking a step back, I mean, are we not, not to contradict you, but we can still approve this. They still have to get that permit. That's, I'd say it's their fight. But at the same point, we can approve it so this doesn't get hung up, so to speak. And really, we'll still allow that process to happen between...
Can you talk into the mic, please? We can't hear anything you're saying.
Yeah, so basically, my point was, you know, point five already requires for this relationship between the township and Mr. Sukup, that rather than try and stymie this tonight, you guys still need to have this in place, and there still needs to be agreement in place. So by approving this, we're not saying, you know, "Go put a shovel on the ground tomorrow." But we're still allowing that process to occur, that this hall road, which seems to be the biggest point of contention that I'm hearing, still allows that process to occur. Now, I can also say that I can think of pits that we've approved or by Ellis that are on gravel surface off of that. So I don't necessarily think that we need to put a stipulation in here for asphalt pavement. But I still do agree that there still needs to be this agreement for a hall road. But I don't want to defer or reject until that's in place.
Any other comments? I tend to agree with Mike. We have the conditions in there for a reason. It's our job really to approve these items, and hopefully, they can work them out with the conditions, whether it's the township, or the county, or the city, or whatever. Otherwise, we deferring it's just going to be holding it off another month. Then doesn't mean that any of it's going to work itself out anyway at this point. Do I have a motion?
Because I would make a motion to approve. I guess I would like to add that stipulation of twenty-three, the no truck traffics to go west. I think he needs to remain. I mean, he's the steward of Hartford. That's your desire.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? We want to add a number twenty-three, so that they don't go west. Is that correct? And all the other conditions are going to stay the same?
To include that the agreement, the hall road agreement with the Hartford Township be made, right?
Correct.
Number five, anyway.
Okay, I just wanted to reemphasize it.
So motions are made and seconded to approve the condition to permit nineteen dash two-two with the twenty-three conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Regular agenda. We have a rezoning, nineteen oh five, to rezon from A-one Agricultural District to the Almond Branch Plan Development District on the property legally described as track one. Hanson addition, east half, southeast quarter, section fourteen, township one oh three north, range fifty west. Petitioners are Parth Patel and Amita Patel. They're also the property owners. Location is four miles southwest of Baltic. Scott?
Madam Chairman, I just want to make, I wanted to inform the commission that the city has a quorum. So I'm not sure if you want to take a break or if you want to plow on, because they're all patiently waiting. But, because this item and then the ordinance text amendment is going to take another hour at least, so...
We're almost ready to be done with the city of Sioux Falls, right?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to recess the county planning commission and to return from recess, I guess, with the city. Is there a second?
For this?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll meet...
Ideas of how to maybe, you know, keep four seventy-one safe. And we thought, like, when a customer puts down a deposit for a wedding, we would, you know, I'm going to be there, I just graduated college, so I'm going to be there running the business, like, this is my career. And what I would like to do is, like, part of the deposit, you know, I would count vehicles or whatever, like seventy-five percent would have to use that oil road and then cross over to two fifty-three. And then just south of our property is two fifty-three. So that would, you know, take some load off of four seventy-one. But I'm really flexible at this point at, you know, what you recommend about the roads.
Any other questions for him?
Madam Chair, I guess if you build a house there and a wedding chapel in there, I guess, how much room are you going to have left for parking in there with the grove of trees? That takes up about half your property already in there.
Right, actually, the house is, we weren't sure how that worked. So we wanted to keep our house eligibility. So that's why we included that part. But we don't plan on building a house with a wedding barn. Like, we weren't sure how that would work out. So we want, like, in case of this doesn't work out, we want to keep that housing eligibility. But we don't plan on building a house, we don't see it.
You understand there is a fifteen hundred head K-hole right to the north of you there to feed cattle there?
Say that again.
There's a fifteen hundred head feedlot there to the north of you, or potential to feed that?
Right, for us, that's nostalgic, like, that adds to the country wedding. Like, we think if people want to, you know, book our venue, they'll know that it's there, right? So if they want that real, true country wedding, it actually adds value, in my opinion.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Will you please step forward, state your name and address, please?
Good evening. Jared Quested, I live at two five one seven six four seventy-first avenue. I own the feedlot right there. So I guess, about a year ago, when I was here to do my permit. So I appreciate Parth called me the other day and we talked a little bit on the phone and got to understand each other a little bit. So I still have my concerns, I guess, with having a feedlot there. We do plan to expand and as long as we can, I mean, we plan to do as much as we can. So with that, he would be within my setbacks if we ever come back again for another K-hole or a larger one. So it concerns me that someday, when people, their guests are going, well, we don't like the smell, because they might like the nostalgia of the, out in the country. But there is an odor with K-holes. They're not there all the time. And then there's flies and things like that, which we have done tree plans and pest management plans and things like that to try to minimize them, but they're still there. We've talked about the condition of the road. Part of it's safety of the neighbors. Usually at these events, there's alcohol that's drank and, I mean, it's just part of that venue. And we hope everybody's responsible, but we always know there are some that aren't. And we live there. So that's part of that. And then the safety of the guests at their venue. There's going to be, most of these events are going to be during busy seasons, planting, silage shopping, harvest. We got a large dairy right there that goes up and down the road along with us, and it's very busy. And so, I mean, there's safety for your own guests, too. I guess the other part, I guess, it makes me pretty nervous being, you know, agriculture out there. And I understand and appreciate your efforts in trying to create yourself, your own career and things like that. That's a good thing, but I just don't think this is a place for it. So I'm going to recommend you guys to deny this, and we'll go from there. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak? Let's close the floor. Commissioners?
Question for Scott. Scott, recognizing that it's not a residence, would the applicant still have to have the covenant on freedom to farm attached to the deed?
No.
That only goes on residence?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Scott?
Can we have the applicant come back, maybe, or?
Well, I've closed the floor, but I could...
I mean, he could respond to the concerns that Jared had.
The petitioner, please, come forward.
The alcohol one, we're not going to get a liquor license, so there won't be... If they bring alcohol, it'll be their own, but I can't stop that, right? But we're not going to be selling alcohol. Trying to think of another question, sorry.
The freedom to farm thing, which we put on residential deeds, says that, you know, you understand, and then in that case, it would be building a home in the rural area that you're going to have noises, smells, activities on the road, you know, soybeans being combined at eleven o'clock at night, et cetera. And so, to acknowledge for people that choose to move out in the country that this is still an industrial area and that it's not all, you know, alfalfa blooms and floating clouds. You know, Jared's concern is that you guys will be an obstacle towards the expansion of his business just up the block. Is there anything you might say about that?
Yeah, I gave Jared my word. If he expands in the future, I'm willing to sign for any expansion. So, I mean, for me, the feedlot, the animal, or, yeah, the feedlot or the concentration animal is not a hindrance to me. I think it adds value to my business, but, I mean, I'm totally open for him to expand. And we do plan on putting a fence, so, you know, people wouldn't, you know, just climb over the mature tree grove and go into the other side of the property.
Any other questions for petitioner?
Do you plan to pave a parking lot, or?
Yeah, we plan to have a gravel parking lot. So we want to have at least fifty cars, parking space for fifty cars. But our building is going to be seventy by fifty, so we want to keep it under two hundred people.
Any other questions? Thank you. Commissioners?
I'd just like to say, I kind of see where Jared's coming from. Farmers going up and down the road where, I think back to the other two we've approved, the other two wedding chapels that we've approved. And one was on a hard surface road and the other one was kind of near a residential area. And to me, I felt safer doing it there than on here where they're closer to a highway. Whereas this one here, you're a mile and a half away on three different roads, or two and a half miles away to another road. And there is a lot of traffic on that, there can be a lot of traffic on that road. And especially, like you say, during a busy season of planting or harvest. Yeah, and you got white equipment and people trying to go down the road. I really fear for that. And I just feel it's kind of a mixed land issue out there for this and the agricultural area around it. So I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say about it.
Well, I would say that I understand those concerns, Adam. And I think there is clearly an issue with what is the correct land usage for this location. At the same time, if somebody wants to invest half a million dollars in Minnehaw County, I sort of feel like, bring it.
Anyone else?
I think it goes back to clustering the residential area and agricultural area that we talked about earlier. I think this is not the right place for it, I guess.
Okay, anyone else?
I'd just like to echo what Adam has kind of emphasized, is the roads being that far off of a highway. And safety, safety is a huge, huge issue. You know, at night, people drive carelessly, they think they're the only ones out there. But there's a lot of heavy equipment out there, so I just can't support this item as we speak right now.
Okay, anyone else have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny it?
I'll second that.
The motion is made and seconded to deny the rezoning nineteen dash oh five. All those in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, move on to number six, zoning text amendment nineteen oh dash oh one to amend the regulations pertaining to signs and the nineteen ninety revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County. Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. So, over the last few months, the planning commission and staff has been working very hard to come up with some changes and recommendations for changes to the sign ordinance for Minnehaw County. The sign ordinance is actually composed of several different parts of the ordinance, from the Red Rock Corridor, additional use sections, on-premise signs, off-premise signs, and then definitions, all contain parts that reference the sign ordinance. And they're all different parts that are being proposed to be changed by planning commission and planning staff. I do have, I guess, since we presented this a few times, I did present last month kind of the core of the sign ordinance with the on-premise signage. I do have the entire ordinance listed out in PowerPoint form, but I don't intend on going through it. If there's questions, we can bring it up. So, as noted, this was brought up in April twenty-second meeting for on-premise sign. The Red Rock Corridor overlay district, the changes primarily change the off-premise signage within the corridor and how that relate to A-one agricultural zoning and elsewhere in the district. The changes for additional use regulations primarily work with the home occupations and then agricultural tourism signs. The home occupation signs are generally made larger, because in the county, the long distances where houses are off the road and the fast speed of the roads, the, kind of the originally adopted two square feet is more of a city or urban standard, so that the larger sign would allow for better visibility. The on-premise sign has several changes in there. Some of the significant changes are as to signs that are allowed in the agricultural zoning district and residential zoning district. The industrial and commercial zoning districts are largely remain the same. And then there's some changes with, say, how we regulate electronics message signs and special use signs and how they are maintained through the county. Then with off-premise signs, the changes primarily work with, again, agricultural and conservation districts. And then with minor changes to the rest of the off-premise sign articles as well. And then the definitions, as we change these, there are definitions that are added or also altered throughout the ordinance to meet our new recommendations. So, attached with the staff report, the planning commission was presented with two copies of the ordinance, one that had all the changes listed out and highlighted, and then one with the ordinance as it would be written for signature. And like I said, I have the whole ordinance on PowerPoint. If you have any questions about specific sections, we can go to those. Otherwise, it's up to you. And it is a public hearing, so everybody here can speak.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, you ran this through the state's attorney's office and stuff, right?
Yes, this has been reviewed by the state's attorney's office on several occasions, yes.
So I don't want to confess too much, but sometimes I don't read every word of these things. And if I do, I may not understand it. And so, what will happen is, we'll approve it and then we'll find out that there's some glaring issue that we didn't consider. Do you expect any of those kind of problems?
I hope not. Although we have been working on this pretty closely for the last four months, the sign issues has been on and off in the planning office and the step-by... and the step by staff has been worked on for a couple of years now. Um, as we kind of knew this was going to be coming up or wanted to be working on this, uh, and then we just started firing on all cylinders here more recently.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Just thank you for all your hard work on this.
I agree. Uh, you know, this, this is pretty complex and I don't read, I don't read all the stuff either, so to speak, but I have faith in you guys that you know what needs to be changed and that you can pass it on to us. And that's what's important. Okay, I probably have to have a motion to approve this.
Do we have any public input here?
Public input?
Oh, any, I'm sorry, anyone here care to speak?
Uh, yeah.
Come forward, state your name and address.
Kevin Chris.
24685, um, 248, 42nd. Just as an example, Kevin, what's the biggest change you got going? And the only thing that flashes in my mind that, that when I was a commissioner is all of a sudden the difference is you guys got these little winery signs everywhere. I mean, I'm just curious.
And as you just pointed out, little, and that's probably the biggest change is a lot of these signs have been, uh, were initially allowed only two square feet or four square feet. And, uh, most of these, uh, other signs, these, we call them special situation signs, have been adjusted to allow pretty much a standard 32 square feet, um, for commercial type signs, because that's, uh, something you can see off the highway, uh, and work with that a little bit better. Uh, other changes, as I mentioned, uh, agricultural zoning district had changes to what is allowed, uh, for signage. And this would be, uh, across the board, whether it's, um, the seed corn sign or, uh, other types of signage that would be regulated in the same manner instead of, um, uh, regulated as per the use. And that was one of the reasons why we really needed to look at the sign ordinance is to, uh, have a content neutral sign ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Any other comments, commissioners?
Just to Kevin's point, I would say that there have been court decisions affecting uh, freedom of speech and, and what's available on signage that affected. And when you start looking at signs, uh, it's unbelievable how many signs are out there, you know, whether it's, uh, you know, uh, the, the family name on the barn or maybe a, uh, who, or wine or whatever the sign says. Uh, some of them are art and not really, um, informative. But there's plenty of, of, uh, you know, wow. When you start looking at signs, the, the whole world is covered in them.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
To, to approve at this level?
Correct.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion is being seconded to approve the zoning text amendment 19-01. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Um, no old business? We have some new business?
One item new business is, uh, I think I sent out an email every, to everyone about some training I'd like to offer on, uh, perhaps Robert's Rules of Order or, uh, and tonight would be a perfect example of convening and reconvening and things, meetings, how that should proceed on. Uh, Maggie Gillespie has offered to provide you some training and, uh, I will, uh, be providing them some sub sandwiches for you at the June meeting. So if you have ideas of something specific you'd like to have, uh, looked at or, or a procedure that you'd like to have discussed, let me know and I'll pass that on to Maggie. Uh, hopefully in the next, if you'd let me know in the next two weeks, so that gives her time to research, uh, your question. Otherwise, she will be giving us, uh, maybe a 20 to 30 minute, uh, overview of, of a couple of specific things that I think might be helpful for the planning, for the planning commission. So with that being said, uh, I will send out an email and you should, if, if you could, please RSBP if, if you would like to attend the, the, um, the, the training and then I'll have, uh, a meal for you. So like a sub sandwich. And it will start about 6:15 in this room.
Okay. Right before the meeting?
Right before the meeting. Well, it may be started at six and it'll go for 30 minutes or 6:15 and go for 30 minutes. That'll give you time to, you know, uh, bathroom break and whatnot before the next meeting. Does that sound appropriate?
It does. And if I might, Scott, uh, recognizing that this is a totally innocuous, uh, meeting that's being suggested, if you sent it to us under, uh, BCC-
Yeah.
-then our only reply would be to you as opposed to-
I'll do that.
-the open meetings thing where we reply to all.
Yep. See, Maggie came up into my office and explained that to me. So it was helpful, too. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Need a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Thanks, you guys.